And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent help people, without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Good evening. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they're in the plastic sleeve in back the wall. Before we get started, I will ask our chairman to please stand and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up, we have a special presentation as the dedication of the annual report. And I don't know if Mike or Patty is going to do it. They're talking about us today.
Good evening, thank you. The annual report was distributed recently to the city council. We will make it available on the website. We also have some available, a few printed versions tonight. We try not to print too many because it's expensive. And generally, every year, we try to dedicate the annual report to some worthy citizen. This year, we've chosen to dedicate to Trudy Lovely, the recently retired cemetery at the superintendent. I think you're somewhat familiar with my love for Trudy. So I will profess it once again, that Trudy has been such an asset to the city, and I'm happy to honor her in any way that we can. So this report is dedicated to her years of service here in the city. And I'm happy to present to her some versions of the annual report. And I would also note that Trudy's friends and family are here to support her as well. So please join me in congratulating Trudy Lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say a special thank you to Amanda Essler, our assistant in the office, and also Patty, who put a lot of time and effort into these annual reports. It's a great way to get updated and to learn about the city. It's on the website. There's a PDF document out there. It's easily accessible to all. But certainly thank you with all of the other duties they have that take a lot of time and effort to give us this beautiful report and to make it a little bit more interesting to look at. So thank you. Next, I have a proclamation for World Polio Day. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. Whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised of professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas. And whereas the Rotary motto "Service Above Self" inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio eradication initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $1.7 billion in countless volunteer hours to the protection of more than 2 billion children in 122 countries, and is currently working to raise an additional $150 million, which, if realized, will be tripled by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for a total of up to $450 million over the next three years. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents, now therefore, I, Nick Isgro, mayor of Waterville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2017, as World Polio Day in Waterville, and encourage the citizens to join myself and Rotary International to fight for a polio-free world. Thank you. And is there anybody here from Rotary to my side? Yes, it's you. Great, thank you.
Actually, we have a number of Rotarians here today.
I'm sure you do. Next up is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to say or speak about that is not currently listed on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. We just ask that you come to the podium and state your name, tell us where you live, and what it is you have to say. Is there anybody for community notes?
I'll just make a comment. This is more for the viewers at home tonight. I think a lot of you have already heard my message on Facebook that I had put out there. I did receive a call from a constituent that was concerned about hearing the noise on some of the replays on TV. And I just wanted to remind the council, I was told by Dan not to adjust the microphone during, but to at least make it a point to talk closer to the microphone. And it goes to the same as to the people at the podium as well. And also, I did hear that, you can hear straight conversations out behind here. These microphones are very sensitive, so just keep that in mind when we're listening to people talk at the podium and try to limit the side discussions. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else for community notes?
If I may, I would just mention again that absentee voting is ongoing here at city hall. People can absentee vote in person from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. They can also call the city clerk's office or request a ballot online. I will remind voters that we have a new polling location in the city of Waterville at Thomas College. We've got some signage out around town to try to direct voters there. There were some ads in the newspaper today, as a matter of fact. So tell your neighbors, tell your friends, and try to get the word out.
Great. And I assume there'll be signage at Thomas on the day to point people in the right direction when they get there?
We're actually going to have someone stationed at the American Legion to direct voters there.
Wonderful.
We also have been working with KD Cap and the Kennebec Explorer to extend bus service to Thomas College that day as a stop. So hopefully, that will help any voters that maybe have some difficulty with transportation. Also, if anyone has a financial difficulty where they can't pay for a bus ride, we'll pick up the bus fare to vote.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to thank all the volunteers who came out to make the first annual ski-ski swap a big success on Saturday. This was held at the Mitchell School, organized by the Central Maine Ski Club and the Waterville PTO. They got, I think they raised a lot more money than I expected, but I think the real benefit was to get access to a lot of equipment for families in the community who want to participate in these great opportunities at Corry Road and other places. And as a hockey mom, I know it is quite an investment, so I think that's a great opportunity for our community, and we're hoping that it will be a first annual so that they will be able to do it again next year.
I'd like to, you know, talk about civic bails. My first chance ever being part of that. And a special thanks to Matt Skane and everyone that puts that on, you know, to give kids that dream that, you know, maybe they want to be the mayor or on city council or in some sort of government, or driving a fire truck, or rescue, or police car. It was a terrific day that day. I think they all stood and got to make one rule at the table. Most of them would make you cringe if you knew what they were. But a great day and really good for kids, so thanks to Matt Skane and the people that did that.
Anybody else for community notes? Steve, do you want to ask? Is there anybody who is on the council who feels they have a conflict of interest voting on any of these items that we have on the agenda tonight? Okay, great, we'll move on. We're moving to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Unfinished business, order 144, 2017.
Move to read by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
An order provided for sale of city property, 32 Winter Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Soul?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Lessing?
Yes.
Councillor Mayeau?
Yes.
Councillor Champagne?
Yes.
Councillor Tate?
Yes.
Councillor Dupont?
Yes.
All seven in favor and zero opposed.
Next is order 146, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order provided for approval of a TNT easement for the road recreation area.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there Mike coming to the podium?
Patty put a copy of a revised deed, easement deed, in front of all of you. And basically, it's the same as what you saw at the last meeting. The format's been changed. Bill Lee did review it, so he didn't find any problems with this revised deed from what you saw two weeks ago. So I'd encourage you to approve this, so the power lines out of Corry Road can be maintained.
Whereas it's an attachment, do we need an amended motion or we're just?
No.
I don't really think you have to, but you can.
Mike's vote, case it comes up in question. Could I get a motion to amend the easement deed?
Second. Second.
All in favor? And could I get a motion to move as amended?
Move as amended, please.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
Councillor Soul?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Lessing?
Yes.
Councillor Mayeau?
Yes.
Councillor Champagne?
Yes.
Councillor Tate?
Yes.
Councillor Dupont?
Yes.
All seven in favor and zero opposed.
And next, we have order 147, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order provided for designation of a tax increment financing district, Trachten Road Development, and adoption of a related development plan.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the council, questions from the council? Yes.
There are a couple of things I wanted to point out. I was extremely proud of the council's decision two weeks ago to support the designation of a tax increment financing district on Trachten Road and its comprehensive economic development plan. This is another business-friendly, open-door invitation for current private investment to expand and future private investment to consider this prime-time real estate area as a destination for their maximum return profit in a community that must continue unraveling bureaucratic red tape to make it easier for positive return on businesses investing in our community. Trachten Road offers an array of possibilities for an economic platform of multiple dimensions. I want to personally thank Trachten Realty Incorporated, Mid-Maine Chamber of Commerce, and Central Maine Growth Council for their assistance in promoting this area as for current and future economic growth opportunity on a scale that will help create infrastructure and new jobs to our area. Waterville is in a position where it is absolutely necessary to market every corner of its small 13-mile-square radius. The city and its residential taxpayers stand to reap gains for this prime area. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from the council? Any questions from the public? Could you just come to the podium? Would you mind just coming to the podium and letting us know who you are? Thank you.
Hi.
Michael, we might need you, please.
My name is Susan Cobb, and I'm here from 946 West River Road. I'm just around the corner from the Trachten Road, and I just want to come and meet everybody and make a presence. The traffic where I live now, coming from the mill, I live right near the field across, has increased and tripled, and I'm experiencing 65 to 70 mile-an-hour traffic. And it's dangerous. My mailbox has been taken out twice, and I live about 13 feet from the road. So I just want to make a presence here to see if there's anything we can do to reduce the speed, get a traffic light or something, because it's beginning to get really dangerous.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you coming here, because those are the legitimate concerns. Jackie, is that your ward, or is that Nick's?
It's across the street. Well, either or.
Is it on the riverside?
But more, I'm just trying to figure out who to coordinate with Mike.
Yeah.
You're on the riverside of the road?
Yes.
Okay, then, then I would be your city councillor. We all work together.
Yeah, so I would direct you probably, if you want to give your, leave some information and just make sure Mike Roy has it, and I'm sure Mike and Jackie would probably be the place to start, to generate that discussion and see how we can address your concerns.
Okay.
And thank you for coming. Any?
Yes. Julian Payne, Ward 5. I was actually, had the opportunity to speak to Chief Massey this week, and he'd mentioned that they had secured some extra funding to police speed in Waterville and traffic concerns through some grant. I'm not sure where the monies came from, but he had mentioned that they had secured funds to try and deal with the problems of speed along that road. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm sure Mike has probably been aware of that.
Yeah, we've actually put our mobile speed sign out on the Trachten Road and the Eight-Rod Road, and we started doing a lot more patrolling, so.
West River Road, sir.
West River Road.
Yeah.
West River Road, it's been like that for a long time.
All right.
So if you have any friends or neighbors that live out there, tell them be careful about speed, too. Choose the other ones we get first.
But, please, just want to make sure that we do get your information so we can.
Safety's important.
Yes. Any other questions or discussion? All right, Patty, can I get a roll call?
Absolutely. Councillor Soul?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Lessing?
Yes.
Councillor Mayeau?
Yes.
Councillor Champagne?
Yes.
Councillor Tate?
Yes.
Councillor Dupont?
Yes.
All seven in favor and zero opposed.
Great, thank you. Next is order 153, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order provided for approval of forfeiture.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call?
Councillor Soul?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Lessing?
Yes.
Councillor Mayeau?
Yes.
Councillor Champagne?
Yes.
Councillor Tate?
Yes.
Councillor Dupont?
Yes.
All seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, we are at order 154, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order provided for expenditure of downtown tip funds.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Just for the record, this is an expenditure of funds that we talked about at our last meeting to get the detailed survey plan for the former Eldon Inn property so we could provide more public parking for the downtown area. All right, I'll take a roll call.
Councillor Soul?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Lessing?
Yes.
Councillor Mayeau?
Yes.
Councillor Champagne?
Yes.
Councillor Tate?
Yes.
Councillor Dupont?
Yes.
All seven in favor and zero opposed.
Order number 155, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order provided for approval of environmental covenant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Soul?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Lessing?
Yes.
Councillor Mayeau?
Yes.
Councillor Champagne?
Yes.
Councillor Tate?
Yes.
Councillor Dupont?
Yes.
All seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, we're moving on to new business. We have resolution 157, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution provided for appointing Cynthia Pearl as civil constable.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is Cynthia here?
She was appointed last year, too, wasn't she?
Any discussion or questions? Someone did ask a question, I won't say who, but what is a civil constable?
It's basically someone that serves civil process on people, a private entity that does that rather than just the chair of, that you hire. And that's really their only function. No? Am I wrong? I think that's their only function.
Okay. All in favor? Next, resolution 158, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution provided for issuance of an innkeeper's license to Dana Jenkins doing business at Anchor House Airbnb.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next is resolution 159, 2017.
A resolution provided for establishing hours for voter registration. Whereas Title 21, major by statutes annotated, Section 122.8, requires special evening hours for voter registration on three out of the five business days before an election unless the municipal officers establish different hours. And be resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city council hereby establish voter registration hours to be Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with special evening hours on Wednesday, November 1st until 7:00 p.m.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor? Resolution 160, 2017.
A resolution provided for authorizing a regular municipal election to be held on November 7, 2017. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city council hereby authorize a regular municipal election to be held on, that should be November 7, 2017. That's what happens when you come in pace for the following positions. Three-year terms, Ward 2, City Council and Board of Education. Ward 4, City Council and Board of Education. Ward 6, City Council and Board of Education. Citywide mayor and citywide Kennebec Water District trustees, two seats, and a two-year term for Ward 5, Board of Education.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Order 161, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution provided for approval of forfeiture.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mike, did you add some things you want to say?
Yes. I was actually getting up on the next line.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Any discussion on the forfeiture? All in favor? Last item, order 162, 2017.
Move to read by summary only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
An order provided for sale of city property, Kilman Street. This order imposes the sale of two properties of London Bridge. The first parcel is a combination of four small properties with a combined total of 1,888 square feet. The second parcel is the combination of three very small properties for a total square footage of 504. Some of this land in both parcels is actually submerged part of the year.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The summary for this, should have noted, the only reason this is coming before you is the work that the state is doing on the repair of the bridge. So as a result of upgrading that bridge, they had to extend their work out onto city property. And as a result, it's much better for the state to own that adjacent land to the actual bridge footings. And some of it, as it says, is underwater for part of the year. So it's certainly not any land that we're, as a city, very much worried about. So I'd certainly recommend that we go through the sale of the property to DOT and allow them to finish the project. Questions?
Money will be distributed into the capital improvement reserve account, so that's going right back into the public works.
Correct. Yep. I hope the map helped a little bit in least identifying where these properties are, and you can see they're right beside the bridge.
If we didn't sell it to them, they'd probably take it, right, Mike?
As a matter of fact, yes, they would.
There's really no choice here.
Yeah, no, there's no choice.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
All right. Well, we're on to the manager's report already. And actually, it's not me tonight, it's Heather Rowland. Our finance director is going to give you a brief recap of our financial pictures through the first three months of the year. Our charter says that quarterly, the finance director and the manager should come before the council and say, here's where our expenditures are like, here's what the revenues collected are like, any other items of financial interest we bring to your attention. We haven't done a very good job with that in the past in terms of quarterly, so we're going to try to get on that quarterly schedule. And Heather did send out a summary, so if you have that in front of you, that's where she'll report from.
I have extras.
And she has extra copies. I'll take it. Anyone?
We'll, like, email, right?
Yes.
Right, I emailed them.
I did read it, Heather, I just, I don't have it in front of me right now. Is that one?
I know, I'm sure it was riveting.
It was very well-written.
Do you have a copy?
I got one left. So would you cheer?
Yeah, we'll give it to Linda Britton, we'll, we'll appear over.
Right, there we go.
So you all did get a copy, and I'm sure you read it. Basically, it's just an overview of what's happened at the beginning of this year. There were a couple of charts in there that go over tax revenue. I wanted to include the tax revenue because it is different than the revenue summary that was included, because the revenue summary includes all of our revenues besides taxes. So there is that difference. You'll see that. It does say we started accepting online tax payments, that is through the state. It's with credit cards, so there is a 2.5% fee, but that's just like if you came in and swiped your credit card, there's no difference. We're also working on an application for direct debit, where we can go in and take your tax payments out of your account monthly or quarterly, whatever. We have an application now. If people want to come in and set that up, we can do that. But I'm working on one that we can post to the website so people can print that out and send it in to us. So besides, one thing I also wanted to point out in the tax revenue chart, you'll notice that October is less than previous years. It's because October's not done yet. We've had quite a bit come in, you know, after taxes are due. That happens. Then, when you look at the actual revenue and expense charts that are included, you'll see that we are, you know, if quarter's gone by, it should be 25%. Revenue total is at almost 30%. And expenses, expenses are good, but there are some things that are front-loaded. For revenues, we have certain rental payments for the comm center, service payments, things like that, that all come in in the beginning of the year. So those will slow down. Then expenses, we have dues, payments, like our first park dues, and our county taxes are due in the first month of the new fiscal year. So you see those all front-loaded. So things will slow down a little bit, but at the same time, you know, park, winter's coming, we're going to be buying salt. That was another thing. If you notice in the expenses, they're, in the detailed expenses, you'd see that, you know, we've a little overspent on our parts budget for vehicles, but again, they're getting everything ready and all of that. And yay, that's it. Yes.
I just want to make a comment. Your report was very well-written.
Thank you.
I was able to read it, and it's so easy to read for those that haven't seen it. It's actually pretty comprehensive, but it's, she did it so well that you can actually read through it and understand where we're standing on the budget right now. I'll just make a point that what I like to see is like, we had the capital improvement account, and obviously, we're making some payments and, you know, buying certain equipment. You made the comment in there about the, about the truck coming in a little bit higher, and then there's the sidewalk plow coming in just a little bit lower. So we're actually netted another 5,000. So I mean, it's easier for us, and it's nice for us to keep track of that as we're moving along, so that we know kind of where we're standing ahead of the budget season. So excellent job, by the way, Heather, great job.
I plan on using the same format quarterly going forward, so that hopefully, we can all just get used to it. If there are changes that you want made, just let me know. I can add things, take them away.
What is other revenue? It's only 0.9%, and hoping to creep it up a little more.
It's miscellaneous things. Anything like donations and... Anything like donations and random things that are like $100 for the budget, and if you really want to improve a $100 line item, we can add that in there for you.
I'm trying, I'm reaching for every penny, you know. If I take it away, I'm going to grab some too.
So, I want to echo that same thing about really nice job what you did, but on the investments, some of those variable, or are they all fixed?
The CDs are fixed. So if it says fixed, it's a CD. There are some investments that are in equities or are, I think, some of the cemetery funds are in what they call
Mutual fund.
Other investment, yeah. We have mutual funds and stuff.
Investments, because with the, if you're looking at that sheet with all the investments, the cemetery perpetual care funds and the Haynes charity funds are invested differently than city tax funds, because those two trust funds are not tax money. They're money left to the city, Haynes was for a charity, perpetual care is for care of cemetery. So those funds are invested in a more aggressive manner? Because by law with
Still, I was going to say, still with the idea of preserving principal, but
Yes.
They are more aggressive than just putting it in a CD.
Because by law, with tax money, we're not allowed to invest in any stocks and any risky type investments. It's all in government-backed securities.
Yeah, there's pretty ridiculous rules.
Yeah. Very, very strict. For good reasons.
So those are VIX, then?
Yes.
Yes.
And I have, I do have a more detailed sheet of investments, if you'd like. We have it broken out, we make sure that, you know, there's a certain amount that's coming to maturity within the next year, two years, three years, and every time something comes up, I look to see whether we need it for cash flow or whether we can reinvest it. So we do have all of that detailed out, and I can provide that.
Soon after I came to work here, people started talking about being able to pay your taxes with credit cards. That was quite a while ago, and we finally got it done, and with Heather's help especially, and the other people in the finance office, we finally got that set up so it could be done. Part of the problem was that our proprietary software, accounting software, the MUNIS system, was difficult to make that happen, but, you know, people have talked about that for 10 years now, and now we finally can do it. So I thank Heather and her group for arranging that, finally making it happen. The other thing in the report is, again, by the terms of, actually, it's on the charter, I think it's one of our policies, we're required to let the council know when we receive grants or gifts, what's the threshold amount?
$10,000.
Anything below 10, we can accept, as the administration can accept, to put it in an account. If it's above $10,000, then the council has to actually take a vote, an order vote, to accept the money or gift, gift of land worth $10,000 or more, or property. But for those things, $10,000 or less, we can accept it on your behalf, essentially. So that listing is on the last page of all those items, which covers the last 12 months or 15 months?
It's a little bit less than that.
A little bit less than that, yep. Until the council made that change, as someone would donate $200 to the police department, we used to have to have an order, back then, three votes, to accept $200. And it was like, wait a minute, why are we doing this? So it went from, actually, I think, from 1,000 to 5,000 to 10,000 threshold. So we report to you what those items are, where the, what the money is for, and of course, it's in the accounts.
Yeah, the majority of the smaller ones are for specific purposes, and that's, I did put that in here, you know, what, how much was donated, what it was donated for, and who donated it. So that's, I will continue doing that on a quarterly basis now.
So you can invest the money from taxes, you said, not from shares?
There, there's state statute that governs this. You can invest 10 percent, or no more than 10 percent of the total in stocks that are in companies that have had, over the past three years, a 6 percent growth or something. There's, you can invest 10 or 30 percent in main corporations, and I can give you the statute if you'd like.
The real question I have is, is there, could there be any incentive for an individual to pay the taxes for a year? A certain, if I pay my car insurance for a year as opposed to monthly, it's reduced a little bit, so the city can then have a year's money ahead of time and invest it. And the other concern I had was, if I pay my taxes online, I'm not going to pay by Visa, I'd only use a debit card. But if the population, some people might be struggling, if they're using Visa to pay it, could that increase the fault rates on properties down the road, because they're really, you know, using it because they're down to the wires or any of this, like to become probably the fault down the road?
That is something that the Maine Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association has brought up from time to time. Mostly what you find is people that want their points, so.
Well, the 2 percent isn't going to be for your points.
Actually, I think the use of debit cards or credit cards very much reduces the number of foreclosure.
So that's possible.
People have problems with their credit card bills, but their tax bill would be paid. In the past, you weren't able to pay your tax bill with a credit card. You had to come in with cash or check. Now, if you want to use a credit card, you can. Makes that a lot easier, better for the city, but then people have it, obviously.
There are a number of, there are a number of different options that I looked at when deciding who to go with to be able to accept credit cards online, and they all charge a fee.
But a debit card is no charge.
No, a debit card also is a charge.
It has to, because we still get charged for it. For debit?
Yes.
It's less than a credit card.